Let me see, what's my background? So, my child always plays with my phone, so we'll figure out what background's in the back of me. I'm fine. Alright, so, good evening, um, good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, it is seven P M. And this is a virtual work session from the City of Mount Rainier Mayor and Council. And we have an agenda in front of us. I'm gonna go ahead with a call to order. Um, uh, uh, let me see. I just go by, uh, Valerie Woodall?
I'm here.
Uh, Jenny Halfpower?
Present.
Joseph Jakuda?
Present.
Daniel Carter?
Present.
So we have a full quorum, thank you guys so much. Moving on to item number two, review of the agenda. Mayor and Council will review the agenda in front of us. Uh, Valerie, can you, uh, read through the agenda, please?
Um, yep, this is the agenda of the work session of the Mayor and City Council, City of Mount Rainier, Maryland. Virtual work session on Tuesday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven P M. Items for discussion, one, call to order, we just did that. Two, review of the agenda, the Mayor and Council will review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest or discussion. Um, number three, presentation and discussion on the Bunker Hill mural project, twenty minutes. The Mayor and Council will receive a presentation from the Neighborhood Design Center, uh, team regarding the proposed mural, uh, uh, project at Bunker Hill Road. Number four, um, discussion and on repealing the Police Review and Advisory Board, fifteen minutes. The Mayor and Council will have a discussion on ordinance number zero four dash twenty twenty-five, repealing the Police Review Advisory Board. Um, number five, discussion on the F Y twenty twenty-seven budget calendar, ten minutes. The Mayor and Council will have a discussion on resolution number zero nine, twenty twenty-five, F Y twenty twenty-seven budget calendar. Number six, uh, presentation and discussion on hosting an all committee chairs roundtable, fifteen minutes. The Mayor and Council will have a discussion on hosting an all committee chairs roundtable in January twenty twenty-six. Number seven, presentation of minutes, the city clerk will present the September second, twenty twenty-five legislative minutes to the Mayor and Council, and number eight, adjournment.
Thank you so much, and Valerie, can you go ahead and read the upcoming events, please, for me?
Yes, upcoming events, Mount, Mount Rainier Porch Fest is on September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, from four P M to seven P M. Latino Heritage Month Celebration, October fourth, twenty twenty-five, from three P M to six P M, on Bunker Hill Road, between Thirty-third and Thirty-fourth Street. The City and Joe's Movement Emporium are partnering on this. Um, Public Safety Night is October fourth, from five P M to nine P M, at the Mount Rainier Nature Center. Um, Halloween Parade and Chunk or Treat on October twenty-fifth, at five thirty P M, at the Thomas Stone Elementary School. Parade starts at Richardson Park.
Alright, perfect, thank you so much. And I'll be permissive of not making sure we know that, um, Latino Heritage Month has officially began on September fifteenth and goes on until October fifteenth. So, happy Latino Heritage Month, and we look forward to, um, the various celebrations are happening. I know Joe's Movement Emporium is having, uh, various, um, music groups during the weekend, doing their summer jam. And, um, and obviously, October four is our big day, and not only do we have one event, we have two events, because we have Public Safety Night. And in saying that, um, I'll go ahead and apologize. I think the letters are getting smaller and smaller, um, in the agenda. So, thank you guys so much, is there anything that needs to be added or removed from the agenda at this point? Council? Nothing? Alright. Alright, we're good. Okay, so we're gonna proceed with the agenda as presented, and it was read aloud, uh, for, uh, people that are joining us. We should read it aloud, because we understand that, um, not everybody has the capability to be able to, um, read the agenda, right? For, um, a number of reasons, so this allows for you to be able to, like, audibly hear the agenda in order to know, uh, what items are gonna be discussed in the meeting. And it makes it a little bit easier, as we reference the numbers, for people to follow up with, alright? So, we're gonna be moving on to item number three, which is presentation and discussion on the Bunker Hill mural project. Mayor and Council will have, will receive a presentation from the Neighborhood Design Center, who are actually our neighbors within our city now. Uh, team regarding the proposed mural project at Bunker Hill. And if you guys, uh, remember, uh, correctly, a few months back, um, we had a beautiful chalk mural that was put on Bunker Hill. A lot of the great creation putting, coming together with community members, uh, some of the youth, uh, from the schools were also involved in order to create it, in order to give us a better of a sense of, like, what it would look like. Thank you, uh, to everybody that participated, I know, um, Council member would have put a lot of time in, in making this happen. Um, so Valerie, I'm gonna pass it to you, if you wanna say a few words before we, um, turn it over to Briani, and who else is here from, um, for Neighborhood Design?
We have Nicole Ringel and Mara Dwyer from our team as well.
Nicole and Mara, good to always seeing you guys, so after, um, Valerie, is there something else I'm missing, or we're good, before I pass it over to Briani?
I think we're good, I think this is just, um, generally an initiative to kind of reimagine our downtown, Thirty-fourth Street. I know the City Economic Development Director has been working on beautifying the area and bringing new business in, but this is a way for, um, us to continue, um, reimagining that block, so that we have a vibrant local, um, business scene, as well as art and culture is being celebrated in the city, so I'll stop there, and go for it.
Thank you so much, so I do see a message from, uh, Mara saying, uh, you'll be kicking off the presentation. Millie, if you could, could go ahead and do a screen share, so that with the presentation shows up for Mara, um, that will help in the meantime, um. Briani, I see your mic open, do you wanna say something while we get the presentation on screen?
Sure, just wanted to say, um, thank you so much for, uh, having us on the agenda this evening. Um, we're really excited to share some updates, since we last spoke about the progress for the mural. Um, and I also wanted to introduce my team, so Nicole Ringel, you, many of you met, I think, through the process of putting together the Vision is Yours, um, conference at Joe's Movement Emporium in June. She's our Development Director, and Mara Dwyer is our Project Coordinator, working on Made You Look, which is the state M dot funded, um, Art in the Right of Way Traffic Mural Safety Program that N D C runs. And Mara's got, uh, going to be walking us through the presentation, um, to share those updates. And then after that, uh, between the three of us, uh, we should be able to do some Q and A and answer any questions that anyone has.
Alright, perfect, um, guys able to get the share capability yet?
Yes, thank you so much, thank you, Briani.
Alright, perfect, so I'm gonna pass it to you, Mara, go ahead.
Thank, thank you, and I'm looking at the time, and, and I will make this a quick five-minute presentation, so we have time for discussion, to transition around seven thirty. Okay, um, can folks see my screen, you should see a, a blue screen that says Bunker Hill Road, great?
Yeah, it's visual.
Um, so, I'll just, we'll kind of be walking through an overview of this, and some updates, and a few more things to discuss, um, there we go. So, we started back in twenty twenty-three with initial engagement here. Um, you can see, uh, this is a kind of a youth-led chalk engagement session, where we saw themes around plants and roots and music and dancing. It was kind of the start of this idea of how can we put a permanent piece of beautiful street art here, um, on this road in front of Joe's Movement Emporium, where students are crossing all the time from the school to the community center. Um, and so we know that from this outcome, groups of students, uh, came up with really fun ideas, like butterflies and flowers, again, hearts, music. Um, and all of those things have been kind of noted and taken along with this, in thinking about the different iterations of this mural. This is a lot of text here, but it's just to outline kind of where we started. And then, in, in twenty twenty-five, we picked up the engagement sessions, knowing we had this opportunity to do a demonstration mural for the Vision is Yours. So, leading up to that, during the open studios, um, when N D C was really just opening the new office in Mount Rainier around the corner, um, we had an opportunity for folks to come by, speak more about the Major Look project, talk more about, uh, that intersection, their routes, what they would like to see there, um, and just have, like, another opportunity to learn about Neighborhood Design Center, and for us to learn more about the community. Um, and then on June fourth, um, a month later, our team went to Joe's Movement Emporium and did a student workshop, again, just talking about art in the right way, talking about, um, students' route to Joe's Movement Emporium, that location outside, and what they would like to see in terms of, you know, drawings and designs, and just getting students, um, involved in the process. So they're learning along with everyone else, what does this mean, how do you do this, what could this look like? Um, and so here are just some examples of what students did, and we also, students drew on, um, on, you know, just printout drawings that showed the aerial view of the street, and then also went outside, and were able to kind of design chalk drawings, uh, that were shared with the artist, and that continued to kind of build, uh, a design idea for this. Um, and then, of course, that led to the temporary demonstration at Vision is Yours, um, re- really the next day. And so the goal here was to engage participants in a hands-on demonstration of art in the right of way, um, to test creative place-making as a strategy for traffic calming near the intersection of Bunker Hill Road and Thirty-third Street. So this was really an opportunity, um, for folks, oh, here's just a, another view of the location, so we're really looking at right in front of Joe's Movement Emporium, um, and what you see in the top right is the kind of yellow outlined suggested area for the more permanent version of the mural, that's also where the temporary version was during the Vision is Yours Festival. And the goal really is here to make, um, to make the street safer, especially for after-school programming and evening pickup hours. Here are some photos of that temporary mural demonstration project, so you're seeing these tropical colors and, and bugs and native plants and fruit, and a kind of, um, kind of energetic color and design throughout the street. And I know our, our artist, Chalk Riot, a local street mural artist, really wanted to design something that folks could participate in at the end, at the end of the day, during the Vision is Yours, and actually help paint. This is a photo of students from Joe's Movement Emporium getting to witness it and saying, oh, we had, we had a workshop, you know, we, we drew chalk drawings, and now we get to see the actual thing realized, um, right outside Joe's Movement. And here's the celebration at the end of the day, um, and again, just another opportunity to talk about the importance of using art as a way to, to slow cars and create more space for students, for parents, for teachers, for kids walking across the street and leaving Joe's Movement Emporium. And then this is a, a photo of that celebration again, and, and we wanted to include in here a photo of the garden, the community garden, that was, um, installed right around the corner, um, to kind of show the, the connected place-making efforts here of a garden and also a street mural, um, and how, and I, I think definitely when we talk about the next steps for this mural, we can talk about, um, an opportunity for a community paint day, but also a community day to come and give some care to that garden that was installed during the Vision is Yours. And now we're gonna, uh, pivot to looking at the draft street mural concept, um, that would be a more permanent installation. Here is a draft sketch. We've already heard some feedback from this group, and we will certainly, uh, be collecting more feedback before this is installed. Here is a photo of it on the street, which helps kind of see what it would actually look like, um. And so we have already heard that, um, and the artist, Chalk Riot, is, uh, really open to feedback, and I think our goal here is to kind of collect and consolidate and synthesize feedback, share it with the artist, so she can then make those more comprehen- comprehensive edits, um, and, and continue this process. So we've heard that, um, we wanna adjust the composition a little bit, so it's not under parked cars. Uh, we've heard that there is, uh, a plan in the future to potentially update the, um, what are they called?
The bollards?
The bollards, thank you, the bollards, and also potentially, uh, replace that curb for stormwater management in the future. Um, and so that might mean shifting the mural away from the curb and shifting it away from parked cars, which might mean centralizing it a little bit, um, while keeping the same kind of scale on the street. Um, so, we, uh, we're in communication with the artist, who couldn't be here today, unfortunately, about kind of what wiggle room we have for feedback on the design, um, and she's shared that, um, some, some of the key elements can have some feedback for, uh, for adjusting and refinement, but we're gonna speak with her a little bit more, um. I, hopefully this week can get a better idea of what can be adjusted here, what can be, uh, up for conversation, and how should we frame that feedback at upcoming opportunities, like the Latinx Heritage Festival on October fourth. Um, so that brings me to the next slide, so upcoming opportunities for feedback. Um, I know folks have talked about doing a, like a simple poster or signage that explains, um, what's coming and this idea, and has a Q R code to a very short survey, so more folks, um, can see this design and give some input on what it looks like. Um, that can also be shared via community listserv, and we've, uh, consulted with the artist, and you know, she's really flexible, really open, and she wants to get this right, and so she has, uh, agreed to have a survey deadline of around October twelfth, which is a Sunday, um, which gives about a week after October fourth, after the festival, um, for further input, and then she can make those edits and be ready for install. Um, and then, I think what we really wanna talk about with the City Council, with, with everyone here, is the timeline. Um, and so again, we're in consultation with the artist of Chalk Riot, um, and previous kind of planning, draft planning, has, has started the site prep and power washing on Monday, October twentieth, with painting that week. Um, starting painting on Tuesday, October twenty-first, Wednesday, the twenty-second, Thursday, the twenty-third, with a Friday, the twenty-fourth, as a potential extra day, in case, you know, something comes up, it rains one day. Um, there's always, you know, it's always good to build in some contingency. Um, the artist is also very willing to do a community paint day, and so that could look like an afternoon, um, that complements after-school programming at Joe's Movement Emporium, where parents are also invited to come, if they're able to be there early, neighbors are invited to come, staff can participate, and, and, and again, be a hand in putting the paint on the street, so that when it's done, they can say, I helped paint this. Um, and then, of course, we'd love to do a ribbon-cutting celebration, um, and it's, we were thinking it'd be good to just maybe give a little wiggle room after that community day for some cleanup, make sure everything's good, everything, all the, you know, final details are in there, and to potentially do something on a Friday, October twenty-fourth, um, in that kind of early evening window, but that is, you know, that is up for conversation as well, depending on what else is happening in the neighborhood at that time. Um, and so that's, that's our timeline right now, we can certainly discuss that. And then, last but not least, um, one of the main things we wanna get clear on is where that road closure is. Um, and so what you see here is, the red lines are really showing that the road closure would only be a section of the road versus the entire road, so that Joe's Movement Emporium, um, staff can still access their parking lot on, directly, um, on the, uh, left side of that red line, and that, of course, businesses and, uh, restaurants and N D C, uh, that's our parking lot on the right side, so we, those parking lots can still be accessed, but, um, we are proposing that that section of the road is closed off for that week, um, because it gives the artist the, the best working conditions, um, to work efficiently, um, and to, you know, really, really ensure that it's done in the timeline that we have for the road closures. And that is my last slide, and we have ten minutes, I went over, I apologize. But I would love to talk about, yeah, the timeline, this ribbon-cutting and road closure questions that you have, or questions about the design and feedback.
So, thank you guys so much, uh, so, uh, at least I would tell you that when it comes to the feedback with the road closure, that'll be more of, uh, Mr. Kamali, maybe Valerie and I could join, and, uh, our Chief of Police, Chief Ferris, to, like, guide where it looks like in order to have the communication, I'm sure, like, Rosio potentially, right, whoever's in Mr. Kamali's team, in order for them to tell you, so that we also put information out on whether it will be closed ahead of time, in order to make sure that we're informing, uh, the community, so they could, like, meet with you and, and finalize, um, what it looks like and whatever the information is on it, so that might be on the administrative side of things. Um, but I think that what you're marking, you know, between the parking lot from Joe and the parking lot from the business, that's more or less, uh, what have we previously discussed, so that way it does not affect either of the businesses, and this is gonna be doing during the week, um, so I will alert the church, you know, but, um, you know, so it should be at least the people that move around it, uh, will know, and I think the other part that we talked about was, um, a school board member, so that way she also notifies that during that week, uh, for a bus drop-off, um, they might have to do it to the, to the side, in order to make sure that that is, that is handled. Um, but yeah, so I think the ministry side is fine with it, um, I'll go ahead and open it up to Mayor and, not to me, obviously, uh, to the rest of Council, in order to make sure to see if they have any questions. Um, and thank you so much, I know it's taken, um, quite a bit of time to put it together, presentation in temporary format, to get the feedback, and I also wanna point now that when you talk about the youth, um, the youth, um, have been heavily involved, aside from the, the design, um, the know your, you know, it's like, you know, um, the, the big, um, event that we had, right, where Mayor Community Members came in and also gave feedback, the kids that either attend, um, to, you know, Joe's or are the bus stop that were giving their feedback, that I think is about maybe five different schools, including the three big feeders, um, to our community. So, Thomas Stone, Morena Elementary, Caesar Chavez, but I know there's like at least one or two other, and that encompasses maybe about five cities or so, so it's been definitely, um, quite a bit, and then we have families from the various parts of the neighborhood come in, um, for the big event, not just to participate in, um, in the conference, but also after hours to see, um, visually enjoyed it. Alright, so I'm gonna go with, uh, Jenny, go ahead.
I just wanna say thank you for the collaborative nature of this, I appreciate the opportunities for feedback. Um, but I'll defer to my, uh, colleagues from Ward Two to discuss more of the specifics.
Alright, perfect, thank you so much, Jenny, um, it is located in Ward Two, uh, thank you for that. I'm gonna go with Daniel, and I'm gonna toss it up with Ward Two, since, um, it is right on their, right on their line of, of, of the map, go on.
Thank you, um, y'all, that, I love the design, I love that. I, I know those are butterflies, but my, my dragonfly heart sees dragonflies, so, um, I, excuse me? Oh, I thought she was talking to me, um, I love the idea, um, even though, even though Joe's is in Ward Two, admittedly, we all love, I mean, we all love Joe's and everything involved in it, so, um, I'm excited to, uh, see how it works through, and Mr. Kamali, uh, working with you guys on finding out where the perfect place in the road is. Um, so yeah, thank you so much for all you're doing and bringing to the community.
Alright, Joe, I know, and I wrap it up with Valerie, because I need to be more in-depth involved, Valerie, go on, Joe.
Um, I, I enjoyed the, the temporary, um, mural that was in place, I thought that was a great idea in order to get us adjusted to what this may look like. And, um, I'm looking forward to seeing the finished project, it sounds like a lot of, uh, a lot of logistics are already being thought about, um, I personally, my kids get picked up on that corner, so I'm, I'm definitely looking forward to see, um, how, all, how the bus, uh, drop-offs are addressed, but, uh, I, I'm, I think that's all gonna get taken care of, and I'm looking forward to seeing the project.
Thank you so much, um, Valerie, go ahead.
Um, yes, well, thank you for presenting on this and for all your, uh, legwork to make this happen, I know it's, it's been, um, idea, it's a plan, to feedback, to everything, um, so I know it's been a process, but, um, I also, I just, my only question for you is, if we're doing the ribbon-cutting on a Friday, is it possible to get the, um, place-making shed again, from the county, um, to make, and, and to collaborate with local businesses again, um, to have like a ribbon-cutting that leads into like a little get-together, I don't know.
That is a question we can ask, um, of the, the commission, for sure.
Great, thank you.
I see your vision there with making it like a, a little bit more of a party, and, and, you know, uh, and working with the businesses there, and I also see the question about, uh, considering the Community Paint Day be later or on a weekend, and that that, um, I've, I thought that question might come up, and we can certainly ask the artist, is there an opportunity to push the start date back, so the Community Day and the celebration lands on the weekend, or is there a possibility to have a break in the schedule, which might be complicated in terms of reopening the road or cars going on, you know, the, the paint without, like, the, all the layers that are needed and taking up paint, so it gets a little technical there, but we can certainly ask and brainstorm, because I hear you that having a Community Paint Day on, like, a Thursday afternoon from, like, four to seven is not the biggest window for folks to participate.
Yeah, I think that the other challenge we have is on Saturday, you do have services in that church, and that whole entire space is, like, overtaken. So we also need to be aware that logistically, um, it's gonna be, um, very hard for all of us, we're gonna have to pivot, um, even with dropping, and the good thing about it is, like, because of where the closure is gonna be, it does has a little bit of open space. Um, I know that when we had, um, conference, right, the place-making conference, um, it allowed for the bus to drop by the side, and we make sure, you know, Joel makes sure that there was somebody to make, uh, pick up the kids there if need be, or at least, um, they, they pivot to make sure to adjust and talk to the parents about it as well, but, um, I would say that it's gonna be, I think that, I know we've, we talked about five days, that's with the extra day, in case needed, but I'll tell you this, logistically, it's gonna be a lot of work, because that route is, like, very trafficky, um, for pickup and drop-off of, uh, kids in the morning. So, I would say that, um, they'll look into it and figure out what it is, and, and again, I think they're trying to do as much as they can, but if it's hard for us to do it, like, on a Monday to Thursday, it's definitely gonna be even harder for us to do it, um, on a Saturday, especially with a lot of the business people, and the other part that Valerie mentioned, I think it definitely fits very much with a place-making, like, ideology that we have, we know, so that way, like, it becomes a destination and work, and work through it, alright? And if we're having weather, anything like we're gonna have in the next four days, that project might send longer than we would like to, because wanna make sure it's done and dry and, and, and move on, but at least, like, the weather to this week is, like, rain until Thursday, right? So, those days are there, um, the City of Mount Rainier will be sending notifications out, Mr. Kamali will be, like, uh, working with his team to send, um, any blasts out to alert people of, like, uh, traffic conditions, the changes, but also when it comes to the survey, so that way we could get, uh, more people involved, and we will work, um, with the other parties around it. The good thing about you guys being on Thirty-fourth Street, you guys have neighbors to the other people that are there, so it's not like, um, a stranger parachuting into the location, it's more of like, and they have been very open and welcoming, even with the different things that were happening, um, that week, so. Yeah, we appreciate that.
And with our, if there are questions, we'll get knocks on our front door, so, uh, we have to do a great job with this.
And with our couple minutes left, Briani, I just, uh, with our couple minutes left, I just wanna revisit that, where we share that your input on, like, what works for a Community Paint Day is extremely valuable, so if other things come up, um, please do send us an email, throw it in the chat, um, I'm hearing there's complications for both weekend and weekday, um, so we can look at some options and revisit that. Um, and I'm, and Briani has a quick update about the funding for this mural, which, uh, we just learned today, that I would like you to share.
Go ahead, uh, Briani, and I was gonna read to see the messages that were there, but go ahead, I'll, I'll read them after, go on.
So, just, I would be remiss not to share.
Do me a favor, before you start, because I already have a big screen in my things, uh, Council, can I get two minutes on the clock to wrap it up, please?
I'll second that.
Okay, so it's probably moved and second, alright, any discussion? Objection, extension here and now, we're adding two more minutes to the clock, sorry, Brandon, I tried to do it, like, at the top, so that way I don't cut you off in the middle, go on.
Um, I just, uh, we've been fundraising to make sure that we have, um, the full budget. Um I just, uh we've been fundraising to make sure that we have um the full budget to do everything that we need to do to get this mural done. And so I'd be remiss not to say to you where all the different pockets of funding are coming from. So this is supported by the Maryland State Arts Council, um the ATHA, the Anacostia Trails and Heritage Association. A lot of our time on this is funded by Maryland MDOT, the Department of Transportation. And then um the, the final piece of funding that we needed came through earlier today from Prince George's Arts and Humanities Council. So you, there's a lot of people uh excited. They'll be, you know, wanting to participate in the, the ribbon cutting and be present for that as well. So it is a great profile raising activity. I think there's, um there's a lot to be said for this as a demonstration project for the value of these traffic murals as well.
Perfect. Thank you so much. And also definitely taking for leading the way. I think the conference um allow for people to be able to say like, yes, this is doable. This is what it looks like. Um unfortunately, last time we had rain very quickly, but this is a permanent piece. So I wanted to make sure to emphasize this is a permanent piece that's gonna be staying on it. So let me quickly read through the message. Uh greetings. Uh I got that one. That's more could you please consider Community Paint Day later on the weekday or adults and perhaps parents could work on red days? I think that was addressed as well. Bring back, um I don't know if we need to bring back the artists, but well, that's not because the next work session we have is like in um in October. And by then it should be like, the project should be like, you know, leaning more towards the, towards the other way, you know, so it'll be at the end of October. So if we're aiming at, you know, starting the work by then, it might be already too late. So just if that's the next work session, if anything. Um so we'll, we'll figure out, you know, you could work with our team. Obviously, you know Valerie and I um are here to continue working on the meetings that we're having and we'll probably schedule another follow-up in order to um continue moving the project along. So a big thank you to the wonderful people that believe in us and um we have been building relationships with them. I know, I know I've written very beautiful letters about why it's important for this art mural to happen. And uh but it takes um a collective uh for them to know that not only are we gonna follow through, but we have demonstrated that um we believe in our economic growth, placemaking, and this is important to us, but also like we've been heavily uh when it comes to um youth and community involvement. So and a big thank you to all the, the youth, but also like the various community members that came in and gave the feedback as the mural was happening. So we definitely appreciate you guys as well. Alright, so uh Neighborhood Design Center, uh we will be seeing you guys very soon. Thank you guys for joining us and uh we look forward to continue collaborating, okay? Alright, you don't have to leave, but you know, you're welcome to stay as well, but we'll move on to the next point of the agenda. Thank you guys so much, okay?
Thank you.
Alright, bye. Alright, let me. Alright, moving on to item number four, discussion on repealing the police review and advisory board. Mayor Council will have a discussion on orders all four dash twenty twenty-five, repeating of the police advisory board. Meli, can you put the document green? Thank you so much. Uh Valerie, can you go ahead and gi- give it a read through? Cause there's no way I could do that. They had um they have beautiful flowers today and oh my goodness, it's been interesting the whole afternoon after that. Go on.
Question, do I have to read it tonight or is this just a discussion? Um because I know we have to do a first reading and a second reading at a legislative meeting?
Um, we, I would say we could definitely read it. I know there's been some suggestions that have been passed through. I know at least council member Jacuta has submitted as some recommendations on it, like minor, a couple of minor things, more like, you know, logistical and, and difference. But if now we could just have the discussion, I'm, I'm open to whatever you guys want. What, what is the feeling of the body?
I'd like to have a discussion.
Jenny? I'd prefer to read it at the legislative meeting only.
Okay, Joseph?
Um and I guess that would give an opportunity for the additions and subtractions that I'm suggesting to make it through legal.
Perfect. Okay, Danielle?
Um, yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you. Um I uh first wanna say that I am a little disappointed and.
So wait, 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 Danielle, Danielle, wait, wait, wait. The only two things we're asking right now is, I wanna make sure we're clear, cause I need to like put it back on it. Are we deciding to read the document or just have discussions? So those are the, the, the only question I have.
Oh, I'm sorry. I already said, oh, I'm sorry. I already said to read it. I'm sorry. I already said discussion. I'm sorry.
Okay, cause I didn't, cause I, I mean, the first person I called was Jenny, so that's who I heard. So I wanted to make sure, uh and Valerie, um just for the, for the record, same discussion, correct? Alright, perfect. Alright, so we'll move on with discussion, then we'll read the, the document at the legislative meeting. And uh if you have any additional suggestions, send them over. I know uh customer Jacuta sent some information. He'll send it um over in order to make uh the minor adjustments um that are needed. Alright, so I, let me see. So let me open up the discussion. And again, this is a work session. Uh no vote or decisions made tonight, except for the fact that we're now we're moving it to um the uh legislative meeting. Okay, so who would like to start and focus on, on what this is? Let's make sure we don't get sidetracked it, okay? Uh hold on, Danielle, I don't see, I think it's you. You have your hand up? Cause I see a microphone, but I don't see no hand up. So can you guys work on either like putting your hand up like virtually? So it makes like life a little bit easier for me, okay? Alright, Danielle, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Um as uh, as of the liaison for the P RAB, um I do uh want to express on my behalf and behalf of the, the members of the P RAB that um there is disappointment that this um this idea was not, um at least let me know, nobody let me know and nobody let the uh chair or the members of the P RAB know that this was uh to be considered. Um we did have a meeting and there was discussion, um which I think the uh members of council would have um found to be very enlightening um and very informative. Um as it is written, the consensus is, is that the P RAB agrees that they are not an oversight or an accountability board. They are more in what their desire to be is more of a conduit between the police department and the community. Um more of an education outreach, informative uh body rather than an oversight or accountability, because that is, and I agree, and they agree as well, that's a county level thing. That's not a local level thing. So the members of P RAB would like to make a, uh through me, because anyway, they would like us to table this, not table the dissolution of this, but table the dissolution of them entirely and give them six months to come together, redesign it in that spirit of a community outreach kind of thing between the police department and the community rather than an accountability, like we said, it's not an accountability oversight thing. So they, that is their request is that we table this for six months, allow them to go through the process, work with the new chief. Um and then bring it back to us as a body to um discuss um the possibility uh or the, the um changes that they would like to see making it what their idea is. And then if we want to dissolve them entirely, that is, you know, up to the vote, but it gives them a chance to at least um fight for the community outreach committee that they uh so strongly desire to be. Now, they also admit in this meeting that their terms in office, the five of them now, are up. They only had two years, so their terms are up. So it would also, they would be a part of building it, but they also understand that odds are they would not be the uh committee moving forward if their uh revamp is accepted. Um so uh with that, I uh will um let the uh four of you ask questions. Uh like I said, I did have a meeting with them on Sunday. There are a couple of members here if you wanna ask any questions, but that is.
You need to wrap it up, because that went beyond the, that went beyond the time. Alright, so I was trying to like, I was trying, that's also like wrap it up because it's like it went beyond the time. Okay, alright, thank you for that, for that information. And um and, and I guess what I gathered from you is like, is to fully understand that it's not what it intended to be and I think that all of us are in agreement that um it's not what it's intended to be and that's the reason why we're here today. Alright, so I'm gonna go Jenny, Joseph, Valerie. Go on.
Um, I'm in support of dissolving the P RAB, cause I, I think the original purpose of it and what I read from the original ordinance that established it is no longer needed. I'm interested in more communication, however, between the police department and the community. And I'm interested in the public having opportunities to um have questions answered and discussed in a, in a open forum. I would like to defer to the new chief on the best way to do that. And I'm interested in, she has a lot of experience and I'm sure she will want to make changes in how the police department communicates and interacts with the public. And so I, I would prefer to defer to her rather than continue to have any kind of body. If she feels that it's necessary to have a body like this, then um then I would like to see a proposal on that, but I assume she'll need some time to get settled into her position before um coming out with any specific proposals. I do share uh the disappointment that Danielle or the council member Carter and the members of P RAB were not informed of this uh prior to it being put in the work session, but I'm glad that they were able to meet and discuss it.
Alright, thank you, Joseph.
Uh thank you, Mayor. Um I'm also generally in favor of uh the dissolution. Um I do think that this was a really important um board when it was put in place. Uh you know, in twenty twenty, we, we needed action like this. But because of the preemption from state law and now that this is essentially a county obligation under the original intent, um I, I do think that we're being covered um for what was originally needed. Um I also think that the I've, my experience is that the, the police do a, uh really, I mean, they do a pretty good job of getting out in the community. They do National Night Out, they do donut, uh coffee with the cop, they, you know, they march to the parades. Um they're, and they're out and about and I mean, obviously engagement's never going to be perfect, because we can't all be everywhere all at once. Um but I, I, I do think that that's in place, but I, I would like to hear what the uh the new chief says, since she just started this morning, I guess. I'm sorry couldn't be there, cause I'm all under the weather. Uh but uh I, I, at this point though, I, I'm not quite seeing the path forward unless the chief phrases a red flag saying, wait a minute.
Okay, thank you, Joseph, Valerie.
Um thank you. I echo what Jenny and Joseph and uh to some extent what Danielle um uh mentioned in terms of disappointment without telling them that this was happening, but I do think you can dissolve this body and create a new body at any time by mayor and council, so I don't see the need to delay it for six months. Um we have a new chief, um the city managers working with the police department. And I think they, like Joseph said, they've been out at a number of events this past six months, so. Um so I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So I, I will tell you guys that um I don't, I understand that more communication is always needed, trust me. If I could have like um if Mr. Kamali could have the city staff out every week and communicating with the community, they'll do it. But the reality is like, I feel like as much as I love our, you know, our team, they will quit. You know, we went from having like maybe three major, not four major events for the city of Maranay to there, especially once September, October hits, there's times where they're here like um every single weekend with us. Right? So I think that um and that includes not just like administrative code, you know, PD, all of them, right? So a couple of changes that we have discussed that are gonna be coming forward is uh we are gonna be going back to having our department heads, including PD, come back to two of, like, you know, twice a year for our work sessions to give reports back and be able to answer questions cause then everybody's able to go on location. I know that previously we've had at least like, you know, um forums, right? Once we get our building back, they could have a forum and sometimes they have like a few, some departments are more popular than others. So we sometimes used to have one or two departments in at the same time for people to come in and communicate. That's something that we could do. I don't per se feel like, you know, there has to be an intermediary between the police and the community. I think that, that the police, um you know, are, is a community police. And I think that when it comes to the community, talking directly to police, they do. And so we're trying to find, um I think the PD has done a good way of finding various outlets to have not just being, um not just the fact that they have two gigantic events, right? Um they're also uh with us in every single event that we do. They do SI um events, it's like coffee with the cop. They also do shop with the cop. They do career fairs, they meet with our seniors. I mean, the agenda of how much like outreach they do to various community members and various groups, it's um, it's a lot. Okay, so I would say that if we need to add one more thing to it, fine, but you know, um the composition of the city also has changed. At one point, we didn't have as many events as the city. We had some events that were like, you know, council run and that changed into another like uh city run. So I will tell you that for every single event they put forward, like, you know, the whole team like comes together and basically um you know, you know, make sure that every input and voice is, is on it to make it happen. So I think that that's the reason why I'm very much on the other side of like um they are communicating, they're going out there, they're meeting people where they're at, right? Um if I were to see how many times they met with the, with the youth and with the seniors, it's, it's quite a few of them. A lot of times because I'm with them or we're in the same locations at the same time, right? That's with a county like, you know, uh as an example, right? The explorers uh meet um once a week, right? So the parents have like direct communication and a lot of times with voices of people that don't necessarily um will have felt like in the past comfortable coming to the police department or are reaching. So I think that adding like a forum, but heavily focusing on, we have a new chief. Let's figure out what feedback and information she could give us in order to make sure that um that we're able to see what else she is envisioning definitely um will help. And we'll work it from there, but um I think as Joseph mentioned, today is day one. Right? And uh she'll make sure on it, but I think that um everything that we have moved forward when it comes to the, to the city has continued to demonstrate that outreach to the community is like number one. And this is the reason why we have taken up on so many events, so many presentations, so many outreach from not just our police department, but from all of the departments, you know, down to our HR department. I mean, they will, they will join us for Maranay Day to be present. Our finance department as well in order to make sure that there is direct communication. Alright, so I um, before I open it up to you, Joseph, and this is something that's related um to it.
I, I wanted to make a motion to add ten minutes.
Okay. Um, motion to add uh ten minutes to the, to the, to the clock? Do we run out already at a time, Joseph? Or no, it's gonna run out right now?
Yes.
It's all time's up. Thank you so much, Joseph. Okay, there's a ten minutes in the clock. Um but, sorry, um anybody has a second?
Second.
Cause we probably moved in second. Any discussion? Objection, extension, hearing none. We're gonna add ten more minutes to the clock and uh you got that, Meli? Thank you so much. Okay, so let me, before I move on, let me see, there's a ta, 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 ta. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you so much. I'd like to speak. Okay, so uh Tony, I need to give me uh first, last name, block and street number, and then you have uh, you could have three minutes to speak. Alright, unless you're speaking for everybody, then you have a little bit more. Um, Tony, can you hear me?
Yes, this is Tony George, uh thirty-three hundred block of Rhode Island Avenue, uh chair of the Police Review and Advisory Board. Um I wanted to say the, the, what you all just talked about were what the police department contributes. And that, that's all fine and well, but as an independent body, um which is the role of the Police Review Advisory Board, there's always been confusion or um or say lack of clarification on that issue. Um you know, again, we've never, whenever we're on the agenda, past practice has been even with our former liaison, we never got notification and would kind of find out at the last minute and try to be present and then not necessarily get the time to, to comment or, or speak. So um I think that there is a need for uh the Police Review Advisory Board and given just what's happened with different, you know, the change in, in leadership in the police department, but it's two separate conversations in terms of how the police department engages the community versus there being a liaison between the community and the police department. And how our role fits into uh the county or how the state runs their police review. or how the state runs their police review advisory boards and us being informed of any um charges or after the fact if a s- police officer in the city is is involved. Um, I I definitely think there's a need for us. Um, but again, every time that we attempted to do any type of community outreach, have a community conversation and communicate with the city manager, just in terms of making our presence known and what our role was, we were told that it wasn't clear that in our ordinance would allow us to do that. And that feedback was needed from the city attorney. And the, you know, that's been a couple of years and there's never been any type of follow-up uh regarding that. So I think that there is a need for it. There needs to be uh some clarification and and more definition of of what our role needs to be according to the ordinance, if the ordinance needs to be amended or expanded or um but um I just think that there's a need for a conversation, at least with the board, to get get some feedback. Um, but it's the, you know, it just sounds like there's a the decision's been made and the emphasis is on how the police department engages themselves. But again, part of it is an oversight, not in investigation or enforcement on our part, but um to have some um oversight as well. Um, you know, according to the the city charter, there's a a comment about um part of the responsibility of the city is to be sure that the police department has the resources and whatnot that they need to to do their job.
To like rapid, um give me your last sentence because time is up. Um, um, and as the speaker's on it, uh Melissa our clerk is putting on it whether you guys are running out of time, so that way you guys are aware.
Okay, I will follow up with an email to you and and to council. And um I know that Sharnet is is on 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 the call and would like to make a comment as well, but thank you. Thank you.
All right, so um okay, I thought I thought, so you guys are changing me to the screens, okay? So I have um Sharnet, I would like to speak on the P R A B. Uh, Sharnet Robinson, thirty-two hundred block of Perry Street. Sharnet, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Uh, good evening. And first of all, I'd like to say uh to the council, thank you for bringing on uh this police chief. I think that she has excellent credentials and um look forward to meeting her one day. I think she uh from what I've read, she's an outstanding person. Danielle and Tony, thank you guys for meeting with us on Sunday. I think that everybody got an opportunity to express um what they would like to see in the crap. We were all aware that when we put in for for the um police review board, it was under the guise of one thing, but you know, that didn't materialize. So just um, I personally, I would like to say that it was um very interesting being on this committee. Um, I hope that the uh the new chief coming in uh has an opportunity to take a look at what could have been done with the crap and the outreach that could have happened. Uh, but you know, it didn't. So again, uh I think Danielle Danielle did say that um it would have been nice to know that this was the direction this was going, but I don't think that it was something that we did not foresee. So uh it was here. I hope that there is never a need in the city to have to use a um a committee like the crap. But I do appreciate the time that we had to work together and what the uh committee could have been. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Sharnet. Uh, moving on to I have I guess well, but okay, I think it's um Valerie Zalinski, I was like Valerie, why are you typing in the chat? It's the wrong Valerie. Uh, Valerie Zalinski, forty-one hundred block of thirty-first street would like to also speak on behalf of the P R A B. Go on. Valerie Zalinski, uh are you here?
Yeah, it was not cooperating. The unmute was not cooperating. Thanks, Mayor. Um, so I just want to say as as a member of the P RAB and one of two former law enforcement officers who were named to the P RAB, our original job description, for want of a better term, changed. Well, almost before we even started. And so we were stymied an awful lot. Um, we joined, I think, for the community involvement. And it's true, it's not twenty-twenty anymore, but there's still a lot of mistrust in the community of the police. Um, people had come to us, we we I think we really shone and and I don't know that people knew this. You know, people would come to us and concerned about how how dark a a police car's windows were tinted. Or what about this issue with police not responding in vehicle violation type things? And we'd sit down with the police and we'd work out an answer. Um, the police take part in a lot of events. It's true. But the and and most of them geared toward youth and seniors. But the the adults in the community who reached out to us on occasion to ask questions or to resolve concerns they had, that's why, that's when I felt like that's why we were there. Um, you know, i- implementation wise, we weren't able to even do what we were reassigned to do because we didn't get responses, couldn't get responses and documentation from those that we needed it from to fulfill our jobs. So this is where we turn to our original instincts, to the to the community outreach, to bringing people together. There's there's very much, I think, a role for a community entity to do that. Um, it's not really an oversight function. It's it's a liaison function. And we wanted to hold meetings between the police and the community. We wanted to pursue what we had all intended it to be. I'm not sure how it changed or why it changed. It clearly did not work the way that we we can all admit that it did not work the way that that the implementation went. So I'm on the fence. If if people are willing to to work with the new police chief and and I certainly am, I'm excited about meeting her and and seeing her and at work and 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 how it changes and with the officers. Um, you know, we'd love to be a resource for the community and for the police. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So have any other speakers? No, anything on Facebook? All right, thank you guys so much. Uh, thank you to uh the members that came in and speak. I know we've had the the conversation about uh Police Advisory Board. Was it like Valerie or Danielle, whichever of you guys could have the answer, Mr. Kamali, um or Meli maybe? Um, we had it maybe what? Um, I want to say maybe six to eight months ago, maybe eight months ago? When we were like um discussing about the fact that, you know, there was still uh challenges on it. And I will tell you guys that the original intent, when it was like brought out to being uh put together, right? It was different. State laws superseded us. So basically, we had it to gut everything. Um, uh can I have two minutes on the clock, um council? Or this conversation is done? Is that for you guys?
I'm I'm moved that we add two minutes to the to the floor.
Thank you so much. Thank you. It's probably moved and second discussion. Abstentions, objections, hearing none. We're gonna add two minutes to it. So when the state um got it, the the committee, it definitely um it was a whole different ballpark than what we originally intended. The other big thing about it that um to us, sometimes like I I have to remember myself, right? That we have to remember that for the last four years, about two and a half to three years was in the midst of COVID, right? So we all had it to find ways to reinvent, ways to be outside, ways that we couldn't enter buildings. It it's been, it's been a very hard three to four years for all of us when it comes to outreach. And even yet, you know, um people found various ways to try to communicate. And the Police Advisory Board meetings were open, so if arrested and wanted to state their piece, they could have stated the same way it comes with like the you know, the public comment, right? Space that we have. But also I think that um I also heavily entrust the members of council and our and our staff that they're able to communicate with their community members and be able to pass the information if needed. So I don't have much to say. I think this is a discussion we already heard from the members of community, I already heard from council, right? Um, what I'm hearing completely is like, this is the document, the reason for the creation of what it is and what it's intended of, right? Um, and to clarify, personnel falls under the city manager. So even if X Y personnel thing is on it, it it is under city manager preview. And just like any other committee, um recommendations could be given, but at the end of the day, it's like the ball stops like, you know, with um an administrative side with Mr. Kamali and something needs to come out legislative is like with us. But uh you know, everything that I see in that document, I think, you know, we all agree is like not what it was intended to be. And and that's the reason why we are, I mean, it got gutted as much as they could to be able to supply the state law so much that it lost its function. I think we have tried to make it work and it just it just didn't, right? So I think that's the reason why we are uh where we're at. All right, so we'll go ahead and bring it to the legislative um meeting. And um if you have any suggestions on things to add to the document to seal it, please send it as soon as possible because legal needs to review it. Um, because uh we um and I'm hearing from what I heard from like the majority plus is that the movement to dissolve is working on it. So we'll go ahead and put it in the agenda for um our legislative meeting, okay? And if there's something that needs to happen, we'll work with our, you know, city manager, with the chief of police to figure out what ways we could so um find spaces to the community, so commit, you know, as I mentioned. Um, and sorry for this, I mentioned aside from then coming to board, potentially like, you know, our community forums like we had before, even if it's once a year, to add it to the other twenty things that they do, okay? All right, thank you guys so much for the discussion. I know sometimes things are hard, but we'll work through it. So thank you, guys. All right. We're moving on to item number five. Thank you, Meli. Discussion on FY twenty-seven budget calendar for ten minutes. The mayor and council will have a discussion on resolution oh nine dash twenty-two-five FY twenty-two-seven budget calendar. For our community members, we start discussing the budget calendar for uh next year. As early as September, uh some people, uh it's interesting when I talk to my colleagues like around the state, they think I'm crazy because they start talking about it in January. And I usually say we bring the days up upfront very soon. So people have several, several months notice of what um it looks like, right? So in saying that, I want to thank our wonderful city clerk for putting a calendar together. Valerie, can you go ahead and read through it? She's, and mind you, again, this is a work session. We're gonna read through it. If you see a date that you need to flag for, you know, that we might have missed for election or for like us, you know, various reasons, submit it, right? And it's subject to change once we like, you know, um, once we approve it, like uh last year, we had no idea that there was gonna be special elections and that threw our schedule a little bit off. So we had it to pivot as fast as we possibly could to make sure we um we managed to make that change. So Valerie, if you could go ahead and and read it, I definitely appreciate it.
First reading at the work session, but I will, if you can scroll down to the dates, we can look at those and then we can start the discussion. I'll read this part.
So do me a paper. Can you read that whereas anyways? So that was like public read and then we'll work on the dates.
But we're doing a first reading.
Nobody's gonna pull a calendar. Um, you guys should not be pulling a calendar right now. Give feedback to the to the, unless you know something that's like right now, right now, you know? You know, let us know. But go ahead, read that whereas. So that was like publicly have have been read.
But mayor, we have a first, we have a first and second reading already scheduled in the next legislative sessions. This is a work session and so we can discuss this issue, but I don't think I have to read it for this meeting.
So how do you want to just proceed? Just looking at it and and?
I I can read, I can read the dates. I can read the dates that we're proposing and what we're proposing on those dates.
I I will say like, let me read from the top because the top is important. Okay, you could read the dates if you want, but I need to make sure we read from the top. Meli, can you put the top part up? It might be not important, but it does like, you know, gives us the the days that this embodies, all right? Resolution proposing budget calendar for the fiscal year twenty-two-seven budget, the city, um whereas the city council is um required to adopt a budget outlining the city revenues for expenditure for fiscal year twenty-two-seven. Here, let me get off camera so it's easy for me to read it. Okay, which began, which which will begin on July first, twenty-twenty-six, ending in July thirty, twenty-twenty-seven. Whereas the adopted budget must constitute a complete financial plan for the upcoming fiscal year, including estimates of anticipated revenues and proposed expenditures. Whereas pursuant to charter section seven oh two, a proposed budget for the next fiscal year must be submitted to mayor and council. Mayor and city council are later than March thirty-first of each year. Whereas the final deadline for adoption of the fiscal year twenty-two-seven budget calendar by the city of Mariner is June thirty, twenty-twenty-six. Whereas the budget, uh whereas the budget development process is extensive, requires significant planning coordination transparency. And whereas it is essential to ensure public awareness of the proposed budgets, conduct a public hearing, provide opportunities for a community review and input prior to final adoption of the budget ordinance. Now therefore be resolved by the council city of Mariner, the following calendar of events is hereby adopted by preparation on on city of Mariner budget for fiscal year FY twenty-two-seven. So please take notice of like the deadlines that were mentioned above and the reason why we are we have to go through this process. So it's it's tedious, I know, but it's more of an administrative thing. So that way, um, it is on the record that we read it and read it at least first reading, second reading and at least one time in the work session. So gives time for people to make suggestions on it if need be. All right, Valerie, go on from the dates.
Okay. Okay, all right. So Tuesday, September sixteenth, that's today, uh the city council work session um will discuss the proposed FY twenty-seven budget calendar. Um, Tuesday, October seventh, the first reading of the resolution setting the proposed FY twenty-seven budget calendar will happen. Tuesday, um November fourth, the second reading and adoption of the second reading and adoption of the resolution setting the FY twenty-two-seven budget calendar will happen. On Thursday, November sixth, the city manager will issue budget instructions to all city departments, committees and community groups. This is the important one. Wednesday, December thirty-first, deadline for all budget requests from city departments, committees and community groups should be submitted to the city manager on this Wednesday, December thirty-first, twenty-two-five. Um, Friday, February thirteenth, twenty-two-six, the city manager submits the proposed FY twenty-seven budget to the city council. On Tuesday, February seventeenth, twenty-two-six, the city manager presents the proposed FY twenty-seven budget to the city council. And the city council holds a work session to discuss the proposed tax rate. On Thursday, March fifth, if necessary, publish notice uh in the Prince George's Post and or the Sentinel regarding the public hearing scheduled for March twenty-one, twenty-two-six, the constant yield rate is posted and published. On Saturday, March twenty-first, twenty-two-six, one, there's a public hearing and public comment on the proposed FY twenty-two-seven budget. Um, two, city council work session immediate following, immediately following the hearing. Tuesday, April seventh, uh twenty-two-six, uh discuss discussion of the proposed FY twenty-seven budget and first reading of the FY twenty-seven budget ordinance, two, public hearing on the proposed FY twenty-seven budget. On Tuesday, April twenty-first, second reading, second reading of the FY twenty-seven budget and ordinance and possible vote. Then on Tuesday, May fifth, um if needed, a vote on the FY twenty-two-seven budget ordinance. And Tuesday, June second, if needed, vote on the FY twenty-two-seven budget ordinance.
Okay, um I already tell you that there's, can you go up to the November, Tuesday, November four, has to be changed. It is election day. So that one's gonna have to be adjusted. Okay, so um Meli, make note of it and um figure out one new day. I think in the past, what we had done is either we done it um we have done it, how do you call it, like on the Wednesday, I believe, if it's election day, in order to make sure that we um we still manage to like not move the other days. However, um and manage to um give enough notice for the, that way the city manager has enough time to um put the instructions aside. So November four will be like the first day we need to change because it's election day. And we uh please double check that we don't have a council meeting scheduled that day because based on the calendar, we might. So that they will also have to change for our regular, because the the reality is like, none of us or our residents are gonna be paying attention to any meeting as major um elections are 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 around.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Um, the fourth, November fourth is our uh, that's our legislative session. That's our first meeting in November. So we could, like we did before, we've done it on a Wednesday or we could go into special legislative session or do it the next Tuesday.
So that that's what I was requesting, Danielle, that if November four is, cuz in the calendar shows election day, right? If it is, and if it's already in our schedule, both meetings get changed, right?
I'm just saying it definitely.
Yeah, so because we we so, let's figure that out. It might have, cuz I have, I I have in my calendar like every first and third Tuesday, so if I miss one, it might have been done in the in the schedule agenda or not, but November four will be one of them. Alright, so um Valerie read through it, as I mentioned, number two also states that um it could be changed if needed, right? So look into your calendars, potentially on November fifth, we might be having a meeting or at times we'll also done it the week before, um the Thursday before. So look at your calendars to figure out what works for us, um and then we'll send it out, you know, so that way for the next reading is um the day is like, you know, ideally more permanent because if not, it throws this whole calendar, um I think, I know it's tedious, but if uh we do not do certain things by certain dates, it throws off the whole entire uh calendar when it comes to when it's posted, when it's like reviewed, when it's submitted, and I've been on that end, and trust me, trying to follow the domino effect has been a nightmare before. Alright, so check out your calendar, send the information out to figure out if we're gonna do it on the fifth, right, the day after election. Um, or if we're gonna do it potentially like maybe the Thursday before, depending what the calendar looks like in order to uh be able to subsidize uh the November four day, okay? Is there any other day you guys could, out of the top of your head could think of, or no, if you feel something else, send it over. Okay? Yes, Joseph, your your mic is shut. Go ahead.
Um, I I guess this is more for Mr. Kamali, but um if you were to get your budget request by January sixth, would that give you enough time because it I feel bad about making all the managers have to turn it on on the, on New Year's Eve.
They turn it in before.
Well, it's true, it should be responsible, but.
Let's go November, uh Wednesday.
You're talking about December thirty-first, Wednesday?
Yeah, have it January sixth. Or January fifth, the next week.
So let them look into it to figure it out, mostly entering ahead of time, initially that's more of like after um, after, how do you call it, Christmas, it's more of like um a little bit more of a quiet time for them than it is um than it is before, after. Uh, some of them do take off like um on the first, the first week of like winter, and I think the other problem is that because we never know what's happening, we have been stuck where like winter has been a mess and it has been surrounded by emergencies. And that has prioritized everything. So, Mr. Kamali, look into it and talk to your team to figure out. I know most of them like um submit it ahead of time. Um, so that we could figure out what to do, but Joseph, thank you so much for bringing that to
Mayor, can I say something? Can I say something, please? That deadline is good enough because I cannot change it. I need to work with finance after January and be ready for February to present my budget. So please, we're not gonna, I'm sorry, I I know that I get the the budget from the department every year, and that's a good timing for all of us. And I'd rather go with December thirty-first because uh it takes me and Ron Wilson to sit down and work on the proposed budget. So it's gonna take a lot of efforts, but it's easier for the department heads to come up with their own budget. But I have to give you the the entire budget for the entire city. So I'd rather keep it at December thirty-first, please.
Okay, Joseph, good?
No worries, no worries here.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Joseph.
Thank you for on it. And again, you know, we're just suggesting, if there's something you guys need to have feedback on it, um is there another day I would like to send any alert date, um B C C S to say like, hey, there's a flag on it? Right? But I was, I was suggesting it to Mr. Kamali so that if he has any background information or Meli, they'll be able to solve that before we like, we start opening a can of worms, right? And I know for some of you guys, um it's gonna be your first um, your first budget, so welcome to this side of um to the side of budget uh hearings and all the fun stuff we do. Alright, perfect, um time is up, so I'm gonna move on to the next item. Let me see. Alright, item number six, presentation discussion and hosting all committee chairs roundtable. Mayor and council will have a discussion on hosting the all committee chairs roundtable for January twenty-twenty. Um Valerie, go ahead. And Meli, you wanna put, you want her to put the document in front or what do you, what do you like? Okay, that's it, go ahead, Valerie.
Yes, thank you. Um, actually, Melissa, if you could scroll down a little bit. Um, so I put together this proposal uh with Mayor Benitez um to kind of um build more civic engagement in the community. Um, we have a number of committees, we have like fifteen committees. Um, but I don't know that the committees know that they are working you know, in the city together at the same time, so I just wanna make sure that we can bring people together and kind of build that institutional um civic pride um that we all have here, um obviously as city council members, but also, you know, um you know, bringing more leadership into the city um as we go. So the proposal that I've created here is to um um create an all committee chair meeting, um so all the committee chairs be invited to a meeting um where the city council can um, you know, have them talk about what they do for their committees, um what kind of events or what kind of work they're working on, um design, uh share information together, um honor committee member work, um and build stronger ties uh between committee members. Um, and so I've put this together to be in January, um right after the budget um documents have all um been submitted to the city manager, just so that he can hear from them as well about kind of what they've proposed and what they're thinking about, and so that as we go into budget season, we have um a more direct link um to what is happening at the committee level. Um, it would be at uh city hall, uh we'd have light refreshments. I think five P M to six P M might be difficult, but we could do something um in the evening, I think, um. Um, we'd have to pick a date that would work for the city manager and staff. Um, uh and we'd have to uh pass a budget amendment um to support the funding for that. Um, but it could come out of the contingency contingency line item. Um, and so the timeline would be, we're hearing about it now in the work session, um if we think this is a good idea, we could um do a vote on the budget amendment to support this in November. And then in December, the city announce announces the meeting, emails to all committee chairs, and the meeting is hosted. Pictures are taken, communications go out post event to show that we have this civic pride. Um, uh, and so that's just one of, that's my proposal for this group, so I'll stop there.
Thank you so much for presentation. The other reason why it's being brought up here, not because the meetings could have been, we could have just called the meeting for the chairs, no, no problem. But because the budget amendment is being requested and it's like um mid-season um budget, right? The idea is for this to be a line item for the upcoming budget. And because it's an open meeting agenda, we wanted to make sure it's brought up here. But the idea is like, once it's incorporated in our budget to be like a standard that this is done once a year, uh will be a line item in the budget, so that way the money is there, so that we could be utilized as needed, okay? So I'm gonna go around um around uh around to the council members, if you have any questions. Um, I'm gonna direct them to you, Valerie, unless you need something for me to separate and say something, you know? But I'll direct the questions to you. So I'm gonna go, Joseph, Jenny?
I will just say I'm glad that we're doing this. We had won a couple, I think it was before COVID. Um, and then with nice, uh there were some nice awards and people got to meet each other with all the committees. Um, so I'm glad we're bringing this back because uh especially as a former member of the Green Team, working across committees is really necessary for that sustainable Maryland work, so. Um, I'm happy about this. Thanks.
Yeah, and ideally, we're able to bank up more points uh for our Sustainable Maryland application in two more, two more years, right? So yeah, cuz we just cleared it like uh last summer, I believe. Alright, uh Jenny, go ahead.
Um, council member Woodall and I spoke about this a while ago. I thought she had a great idea, so very happy to see the proposal. Look forward to it. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Danielle.
Um, yeah, Joseph, I know, I remember what you're talking about. They had uh mayor, uh not mayor, city manager Bratz did the volunteer uh appreciation, got to tour all the departments. It was Mr. Kamali was down there in public works, got to go down and tour around the building. It was a really awesome event. I remember, it was great. Um, so yeah, I'm really excited to see this. Thank you, Valerie, um and um mayor uh for putting this together. I think it's fantastic and uh yeah, the committees uh, we're, the city is stronger when we work together and uh I uh I like this. I'd like to see a civic association, but you know what? This is the next best thing, so I really appreciate this. Thanks.
Thank you so much. It's just a point of clarity, that was an open house that we did. And eventually, when we have our building, we'll go ahead and do an open house, but it was a it was an award ceremony thanking the committees and an open house. We wrapped it all in one to try to make it happen, so this would be like at least a standing meeting for the chairs. Cuz um I think that a lot of, I know, another thing. I know very well that um we have a lot of ship, a lot of leadership within our um with our community members, and they uh when it talks about participatory, like, you know, process, heavily they advise the city manager and the various things that we need to do, and that's a like events and ideas and Sustainable Maryland's and and murals and so on and so on and so on, oh fifteen of them, right? Um, and I think that sometimes people tend to forget that there's fifteen of them, so several of them. And at the end of the day, that aside from Mr. Kamali managing like our department, he also like works uh managing the committees um with the help of his staff, right? So it's um definitely a heavy, heavy lifting for us, for a for a city as small as we are, we're very thankful to as many volunteers as we have, but definitely this will help us coordinate in making sure that, you know, it it runs a little bit smoother and finding ways to like for partnership to move forward. So, Mr. Kamali and Meli, you work with us when it comes to the budget amendment, so that way it's followed through, and I'm hearing from council that this is a yes. So that way you could like work with us on how like um the budget amendment um needs to be presented and so on, and where to allocate the the money for um the five hundred dollars that's being requested for this line item. Mr. Kamali, anything on your end? Cuz your mic is open.
No, no, thank you. I'm fine, thank you.
Perfect. And guys, my charger's having issues, so I'm gonna figure it out. I'm gonna change uh on, if not Valerie, like help me out, okay? Alright, thank you guys so much. Moving on to presentation of minutes, five minutes, the city clerk will present the September second legislative minutes for the mayor and council, there in your package. Meli, thank you so much for following through and putting us always like um where we need to be. Feedback, send to her. And I guess B C C S if there's something that we need to know. But direct to her if you have a question. Alright, and moving to uh German at eight twenty, can I have a motion for to adjourn the meeting at eight twenty P M?
I make a motion that we end the meeting.
You have to second it. I made the motion.
I second that.
Alright, any discussion? Objection, abstention, hearing none. The meeting has come to an end as originally seven twenty. Um, we look forward to see you guys very soon, and once again, welcome to our Chief of Police, Chief Perez. And also big congratulations to um our, who was serving as our acting chief, Williams now is our assistant chief, uh Williams as well, so congratulations to both of them as they'll be leading our police department. So thank you guys so much, and thank you, Mr. Kamali, for making um, making sure you bring like outstanding candidates as well. Alright? Thank you, guys. Have a good night. Bye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, staff. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Bye.